So ladies and gentlemen, I do think we now have enough people in the room that we can start this session. We're already 27 minutes late, so I'm going to ask all board members to please take a seat. Mr. Moon, I really appreciate it, but you're taking Ms. Schultz's ability to sit down. And when Ms. McLaughlin sits down, we'll have seven and we can get going. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. We're glad you're here and we're going to go ahead and get started with the Adult and Community Education Advisory Committee Report. So who is leading this? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Brian Graham. I'm the Chair of the Adult and Community Education Advisor Committee. I'm joined here with Karen Williams. Karen, what's your official title? Doesn't matter?
That's fine.
Okay, doesn't matter. And with Lois Passman, who's the Vice Chair and very long-tenured member of the Adult and Community Education Advisory Committee. We are very pleased to present our annual report to the school board. As you know, our advisory committee provides advice to the school board regarding the education programs which are associated with adult education. These programs meet pre-K through 12 and also broad community needs. Considering that ACE has been a point of the school board's discussions recently, we would like to provide a very brief refresher so that we can provide some clarity and context. The three components that are under advisement by the advisory committee are listed here. In the top right, you have the adult high school completion, which is funded through the School Operating Fund and some other things. I'll get to that later. And then the other two components are the community education and adult ESOL components, which are funded through the ACE Fund. And of course, this is the components, these are the components that are the target of the annual transfer. The ACE Fund, just as a note, the ACE Fund programs also provide registration and customer support to various FCPS programs, such as summer learning programs, site-based programs, and also building coordinator training. So there's a lot of stuff that is in there in the ACE Fund. I'm going to briefly dive into each component. First, community education. The kind of hexagon in the middle there is actually a pie chart. Community education is more than just foreign film classic discussions. It provides wide benefit to our community, supporting lifelong pursuit of academic knowledge and interdisciplinary learning. The slices of the hexagon here, the first one, the largest one, is career development. That is the largest component with just over 40% of enrollees. It provides educational opportunities for learners of all ages, joining health, medical business, and IT industries. So what we just kind of heard a little bit from the CTE Committee is there is a continuation, a continuum there that can help bridge people into employment using ACE. There are also included apprenticeship and trades programs, complementing on-the-job training for skilled trades such as carpentry, electricians, HVAC, and plumbing. I'm going to go in the decreasing size here. K through 12 programs is the next largest part, including Global Plus Language Camps, test prep for SAT, ACT, and TJ, math courses to help prepare students for their next levels, and behind-the-wheel-driver training. And lastly, the smallest component is adult enrichment, which provides lifelong learning courses that range from world languages and culinary arts to personal growth. Next, the Adult English for Speakers of Other Languages program or component, adult ESOL, helps members of our community develop practical English skills, including skills necessary for workplace readiness. This also provides benefit to K through 12 students, reinforcing English skills to parents at home and enabling better communication between teachers and parents. FCPS also administers the regional grant, which provides funding for adult ESOL programs in Fairfax and neighboring jurisdictions. And the latest grade has a workforce system focus, supporting adults getting into post-secondary education, training, or employment. And last but not least, adult high school completion component allows for adults in our community to achieve a high school diploma or an equivalent. The Fairfax County Adult High School allows students who need eight or fewer credits to graduate with a diploma, either with the current requirements for a diploma or with the requirements that were in place when they entered the ninth grade. Classes for the adult high school are now held at the Herndon Learning Center and the Plum Center for Lifelong Learning. And then lastly, or secondary, the equivalency, the GED, is the computer-based examination to demonstrate high school equivalent learning. As you can see, funding is through the School Operating Fund, grants, and tuition, again, not part of the ACE Fund. The advisory committee believes that ACE programs provide tremendous value through educational services and opportunities to the community. ACE is an integral part in ensuring that the Fairfax County community has educational opportunities to be able to improve the lives of our residents and their families. ACE directly aligns with the focus of the One Fairfax policy, to enable people to reach their highest level of personal achievement. Parts of ACE speak directly to the focus of improved literacy, workforce development, and lifelong learning. ACE also has development or alignment to the priority areas of the Fairfax County Strategic Plan, which is currently in development. Primary alignment is to the education and lifelong learning area, but there, of course, are also connections between cultural and recreational opportunities and self-sufficiency for vulnerable populations. Before we get into the charge and kind of what the committee did this year, we're just going to go through a couple of the challenges that we've faced. And I think you already know some of this. The areas of ACE that operated under the ACE Fund have run in a fairly lean manner. Because of that, the ACE Fund deficit is lower now than in previous years. This is not because the tides have turned and all of a sudden the ACE Fund programs are self-sufficient. It's because corners are being cut and vacancies are going unfilled to help minimize the financial dependence on the School Operating Fund transfer. If we want the adult and community education programs of FCPS to be innovators, offering new programs, bridging into emerging technology, helping kind of connect people into their careers from, even if they haven't done a second or a second, two or four-year degree, these are all the things that we kind of expect of the world-class FCPS education and we'd like to see carried through the ACE programs. And then, secondly, I think we brought this up last year. Over the summer of 2018, the adult high school completion programs moved from Woodson High School to the Plum Center and the Herndon Learning Center, which had a cascading effect on the location of many ACE programs and particularly on the adult ESOL programs. And because of this relocation, the school board's charge, the school board's charge to our advisory committee for this year was to analyze and report on the impact of the relocation of the adult learning components, community ed, adult ESOL, and adult high school completion, based on the criteria of student access, enrollment, revenue, and staff work satisfaction. In response to this charge, the advisory committee was focused this year on collecting and analyzing relevant data and reporting on its findings. First, the committee looked at student enrollment and revenue, evaluated student access data and existing student survey information that's completed at the end of ACE courses. And additionally, the advisory committee created and conducted a survey of instructional and non-instructional staff in all ACE areas, particularly related to their satisfaction with the facilities and with relocation. The full details of our analysis are in the report and not included in the report are the, all the survey results and everything that we passed on to the staff to kind of help convey some of the frustrations or kind of things that have been noticed from across As a result of our analysis, the advisory committee created the following recommendations to you. First, that the school board continue to invest in adult and community education by maintaining the increased transfer from the School Operating Fund to the ACE Fund. Of course, we understand that this was a topic of conversation recently, and we understand that dealing with the FCPS budget is not easy, but we do appreciate that the increase, especially since what we said already, is in there for the 2020 budget. There are two sub-recommendations in smaller text there. First, that the, that we consider the impacts of salary and program cost increases each year with the School Operating Fund transfer, when the School Operating Fund transfer is determined. As we've noted many times before in previous reports, whenever there's an adjustment to FCPS K through 12 salary or benefit expenditures to administrative or instructional staff, the expenditures are incurred by the ACE Fund as well. And while I personally love to see teacher pay increases, if this increase is not offset with additional revenue, just looking at the ACE Fund, that in itself creates a pool on the, and creates, helps create the deficit. Second, the second sub-recommendation is to update FCPS Policy 3510 and Regulation 3513 to reinforce that the ACE Fund is not expected to be self-funding and that a transfer is expected to cover a part of operating expenses. The June 2018 OAG audit that the school board requested recommends clarifying this policy and regulation to include expectations for the ACE program. Because of our belief in the value of ACE programs, we would hope that this reinforces that the SOF transfer will cover a part of the ACE Fund's operating costs. Second, the second, our second recommendation is to ensure the permanent consolidation of all adult and community education courses, which include adult ESOL and Fairfax County Adult High School, offered in the Herndon area into one site with space enough for all classes and staff by fiscal year 2022. The lease for the Herndon Learning Center is expected to end on September 2021, and we believe that that area really does need continued adult education space and adult ESOL space, so that new space should be located in Herndon. And that the facility must accommodate modern and adequate space for the Fairfax County Adult High School and adult ESOL programs, including sufficient administrative and staff spaces, areas for one-on-one counseling of students, which are not there now, and adequate restrooms as well. Currently, because of the relocation of ACE programs, adult ESOL occupies three different sites in the Herndon area. The primary site is the trailers behind Herndon Middle School. The facilities are inadequate and below the expectations of learners, and we've heard, had reports of learners canceling their classes and asking for refunds and such because of the state of the facility. Sharing the Herndon Learning Center space with adult ESOL has been difficult, and space is very limited. This really is the key issue. We found, I mean, there are kind of smaller points you can see in our report, but this is really the key issue that we saw in our assessment this year with both lower enrollment in adult, Herndon adult ESOL, but also related to staff There are two more recommendations. Third, dedicate a portion of current resources to identifying new funding sources for the ACE Fund outside of the tax base. As we've suggested in previous year's recommendations, we believe that there may be opportunities to leverage business relationships, the FCPS Foundation, compatible grants, and any other number of potential new funding sources to help offset some of the SOF transfer to the ACE Fund. We do not pretend to understand all of the current resources of FCPS in this area that could be used to identify new funding sources, but we believe that the school board could direct such resources to solicit and search new funding sources for the ACE programs. This could help ensure the continued operation of the storied 60-plus-year ACE programs while freeing up the School Operating Fund resources for other K through 12 purposes. And then, lastly, the fourth recommendation is to expand the Adult and Community Education Advisory Committee by adding representatives from business and community. Part of our suggested or proposed charge for next year relates to ensuring that ACE is well-positioned to meet the needs of today's Fairfax County. I've heard from many, the concerns from many board members about what is ACE doing? Why are they offering classes of this nature, et cetera? And we'd like to be able to help, help you understand the need for ACE. To help meet that goal, we believe that it would be possible to model some of the other advisory committees, to allow for additional members representative of the Fairfax business community and of educational-aligned and supporting organizations who benefit both from learners who completed programs, as well as those who contribute resources to ACE. Additional viewpoints from industry and supporting programs such as NOVA, Fairfax County Parks and Recreation, and the Literary Council of Northern Virginia, just to name a few, would help ensure the programs are appropriate and well-positioned. And while I have your attention, we've had some struggles having the members who are advisory committee appointed in a timely manner, or even at all. As a personal request, I would implore the school board, as we are looking at appointments now, to, to appoint members who will help us with this assessment. Our Vice Chair, Lois Passman, has a few remarks, which I'll pass the floor to her.
Good evening, everyone. I think of adult and community education often. ACE, I think of 60-plus years of legacy and the American dream. I think of the mission, quote, "to provide lifelong literacy and educational opportunities for residents of all ages." ACE via its three components of community education, adult ESOL, and adult high school completion provides, supports, and energizes the economic ladder of the ladder of life. I recently reviewed the 2018, 2019 school board charges of nine advisory committees. In a document that was requesting the ACE Committee school board charge for 2019, 2020, seven of the nine committees, seven of the nine committee charges were related in various ways to vulnerable populations. Each committee's charge had language of goals and objectives that would directly affect and impact the lives of all residents of Fairfax County as they strive to climb the ladder of life. Each fiscal year of too many recent years, ACE has faced a funding challenge. ACE has had to make difficult choices, which affected its successful trio of innovation, incubation, and program development achievement of ACE's history and potential continuing legacy. Finally, after a much-needed reality check offered by the Office of Auditor General and a timely audit in mid-2018, a decision was made to increase the School Operating Fund transfer to ACE to meet the needs of all residents of Fairfax County. ACE will continue its focus and enhancement of improved literacy, workforce development, and workforce progression, and the joys of lifelong learning and living. The sisterhood and brotherhood of the multiple teams of the advisory committees are Fairfax County's recognition of and affirmation of its humanity and inclusive worldview. And Fairfax County Public Schools' adult and community education program is very much a part of that vision. Thank you.
That concludes our report. We look forward to your questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your report. And we do have a number of members of the board that would like to speak, so I'm going to start with Elizabeth Schultz, followed by Janie Strauss.
So I noticed that my foreign film comment from the other night seemed to make its way into the intro. The bottom line is, is that this is not a funding challenge, and it's very difficult for those who have been on the board for eight years or more. We've had this conversation. It isn't a funding challenge. It's a question of what's an offering that's made at ACE. I just went to the website and it says you're offering over 1,000 classes. Sign up right now. We have classes. You'll certainly find a class that you like. You cannot offer 1,000 classes and have a funding challenge if what you're offering is what the public will like, and I saw no statistics in this presentation, none. I didn't see anything about, you said, you know, in the beginning, there was a pie chart and you said, "This is the largest, this is the smallest." The largest based on what? The number of students? The number of participants? The cost to deliver? The number of offerings? Profitability? I don't know anything as a result of, you know, the largest and the smallest percentages. So I don't know who's participating, which classes are costing you money, and which classes are making you money. And I remember from a presentation probably five or six years ago, the conversation was around if certain classes, and there are certain classes that are moneymakers for you all, if there are certain classes that make you money, offer more of those in order to offer the things that don't necessarily make you money, but that there is a passion in the ACE community to offer. I looked at the, the number of, you know, quote-unquote, you know, journeyman or trades offerings. You have more adult education classes than you have of those. So I don't, again, I don't know where the numbers are in terms of the enrollment in certain types of classes, but if you're offering over 1,000 classes by your own advertisement, and I happen to look through, I've got the ACE sent-home, published, printed giant magazines sitting on my kitchen counter, there were a lot of, you know, extras offered in those, in those offerings. So it may be great that there's ESOL classes. I see ESOL classes offered pretty much anywhere I go, I see ESOL classes. So the question is, which, where is the gap with, you know, the Park Authority and Northern Virginia Community College and George Mason and community classes that are offered and classes, I was looking for a particular class myself on something else. You know, I looked at a NOVA, you know, it didn't even occur to me to look at ACE. I mean, that's, that's the awful thing, because it was sitting on my counter and it didn't occur to me. But where is the gap between how much money you have, how much money you make, what your budget is, and how much money the school board is asked to cover for the 1,000 classes that aren't necessarily closing the gaps? That's the issue.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Dr. Presidio.
May I respond? Oh, wait, may I respond for just a moment? Because first, the pie chart is of enrollment, so it's not of the number of classes offered or anything else. The pie chart, we can go back to it. And I have, the, the exact number, I mean, the exact numbers are in the report. You can see, there's a table in the appendix that has all the enrollments for each component. You can see that. About 40% of enrollees is career development, and the other two components are about 30% just of community education. And I have, I have the report in here, so I could actually find numbers if you wanted them. But, and then the second part, and I'll pass it off to staff to answer, is things have changed and they aren't off, there may be classes that are offered, but they're not going to be, they don't run classes with three people in them at a loss. So I'll send the rest of the response to staff.
Dr. Presidio. Thank you, Mr. Graham, and thank you very much for your service on the committee and for the excellent report that you've worked to develop. And I want to thank Ms. Schultz for her questions, because having worked with Ms. Schultz for about seven years now, I understand the level and depth of analysis that she expects staff to do when we look at some of our programs. And I just want to say that some of the questions that you're asking, we definitely can answer those questions. I'm just going to give a couple of brief responses right now. They're really important questions. To some degree, they're outside a little bit the scope of the committee's charge. So a couple of things I would say. You ask a lot of good questions about, you know, the profitability of classes. We actually track the profitability of classes at the course level, at the line of business level, and we can look at trends in terms of those courses compared to last year on a three-year historical average. And we've put a lot of processes in place over the last few years to mitigate the issues that you really spoke to, which is we do not run classes that would not be profitable. We're not running classes at a loss. So we've created new financial modeling to look at what are the actual costs of running the class, building use, not just the staff costs of running the class as well. And we've attributed those costs, those overhead costs, to the different lines of business, and we do that analysis on a regular basis to make sure that we're not offering classes that are running at a loss. The part that I think is confusing sometimes to folks in the community is that when you look at the breadth of classes that we offer, it, there are a lot of enrichment classes in there, and the enrichment classes oftentimes are driving profitability for us. Some of those courses are actually more profitable than some of the other courses, for example, on the K-12 side or on the adult ESOL side, or on the career side. So it, we've got a balanced business model that really helps us achieve as much self-sufficiency as possible. The problem just continues to be, there's not a program like this that we've been able to find or that the auditor general has been able to find in the country that can really run an educational, community education program like this on a self-sustaining basis. So again, I know that those are just some high-level points, but we can provide much more detailed financial information than what was provided in the report to get at some of your specific questions.
I'd like to go back.
Thank you. Ms. Strauss.
Thank you very much, and it's always good to see Ms. Passman. Thank you for your words. I was very pleased to see the recommendation regarding services in the Herndon community. That is a cohesive community with a lot of needs and the availability of the space, the convenience of the space. One of the things I was going to share with you, Hutchison Elementary has a, has a robust partnership with Floris Trinity Church, I forget the entire name. And the, the church also offers ESOL classes, which is all very nice, but what we have discovered is where the classes are being offered and even where the class is in the building, because these are families who share, are often related, or, you know, come from the same apartment building, that come from the same street. And so the convenience and the, the friendship basis that often helps motivate the families to go ahead and take advantage of the services and the learning that we found is very important. So we need to consolidate these spaces. There's a huge need in that community, and they will take it if they can get there, if they are comfortable all coming together with their friends and relatives. So paying attention to the place makes a huge difference, and a lot of those people live within walking distance. So I am very pleased to see the recommendation for that. The other issue with the services, the ESOL services and the high school completion, and again, the, what I had said earlier, the braiding of resources, because we are getting more support from Cornerstones and a lot of other community services. And I don't know if ACE is at the table with what is being done for the Herndon community through FCPS, through Cornerstones, through the Board of Supervisors, through, you know, all of those people and our own people. Do we know if ACE is at the table? Because these are very much family. Because these are very much families who use the services.
Well, with Cornerstone, we do partner with Cornerstone for adult ESOL. We have three classrooms in there, also on Eldon Street.
Right.
Down from that. We do have classrooms there. We have for several years. We continue to partner with them on the adult ESOL side. I'm not sure if there are other discussions that you know of that perhaps we are not at the table.
Yeah, I think we need to, it's Mary Ann Panarelli at the moment that has put it all together. And I think you all need to be at the table. Because some of it is new and so that everybody is, you know, you're supporting each other. And it makes a big difference to those families. So thank you very much. I really do appreciate the services in Herndon. Thanks.
Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Lois. That, since the charge given to the committee was, just for the benefit of public, that I'm going to read what the charge was. Analyze and report on the impact of the relocation of the adult learning components. Adult community education, adult ESOL and Fairfax County adult high school completion programs, based upon the criteria of student access, enrollment, revenue and staff work satisfaction. I think your report, you've done a great job, you know, focusing on what the charge given by the school board this year. Because, you know, we did not, you know, obviously, obviously expect your committee to look at every issue that ACE program is faced with within just one year timeframe of your work. With that, if, you know, my colleagues have not read this report in great detail, I strongly urge you to do that. Because some of the descriptions, if not most, of the facilities condition in Herndon area, serving the needs of the community, they are mostly large number Hispanic immigrants. As if we are treating these needy people in a very, very different way. So for the record, I'm going to read some part of that. Because I found what I read very appalling. I was very upset to read this. And I do expect staff response in great detail, you know, by September timeframe. I need to take off my glasses. The morning classes, I'm at page eight, effect of relocation to student access, adult ESOL Herndon. The morning classes are in trailers adjacent to the parking lot shared with Fairfax County Public School buses, which can be a dangerous situation. The students have a three-port of laboratories available to them, which are conducive for cultural as well as personal preferences and which are especially difficult for older and pregnant students. In addition, there is no running water and students and staff will express health and sanitary concerns. There is a limited use of two miniscule restrooms in the front of the building, but only one or two students can use the restrooms at a time. In addition, this bathroom visit can take students up to 15 to 20 minutes, during which classroom instruction time is lost. And there are many other places in this report as sound as horrific as this. And I feel, I am embarrassed that, that we are treating the people who just wanted to learn English this way. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. McLaughlin.
I'm pleased that I'm able to follow Mr. Moon because I do want to echo certainly the concerns of ensuring that the community and what we're serving is something that I know the board has been extremely dedicated to, which is adult ESOL instruction is important. I know, Mr. Moon, you've also been a champion of the fact that our children are also being educated in a lot of trailers around the county. So trailers are concerning, but I think more importantly, what we'll want to understand from staff is, let's get beyond whether someone's being educated in a trailer, but are they being educated in a setting that is, again, in poor condition? I mean, dilapidated trailers are just like a whole nother problem. And then also, safety is important. I think that, Dr. Braybrand, we're going to definitely need some staff analysis here about what happened. Because, you know, ACE is a voluntary advisory group. We're going to need some deeper review of the movement out of Woodson and over to Plum and Herndon, what that has done. For the record, everybody, Woodson is grossly overcrowded. So this wasn't a matter of being unsympathetic. You've got to have a commitment to educating K-12 students in their buildings. That said, I also would like to have additional analysis done because while I'm extremely sensitive to ACE and I want it on the record again, I will always vote in support of funding to ensure we have ESOL instruction for our residents. However, to what Ms. Schultz has said, when we're talking about the added benefits of what ACE offers for enrichment courses, that has got to be self-funding. So what I need to know from this report is, are we running these deficits in ACE? Because the self-funding courses, which are enrichment courses is one thing. The courses, like, I don't expect ESOL to be self-funding. So let's separate that part out and then figure out where we're having the problems. But these numbers, I want to thank you so much. The report, the exhibit on page 14, that gives us all of the funding, starting at FY2009, I mean, it's fascinating numbers here. Now we need staff from financial services to do their part, which is to do the analysis. Because this board can't keep turning around and trying to figure out how to bail out the costs, what's happening with ACE. Because it is adult continuing education. And we need to know where the challenges are. But I'll just point out for my colleagues that if you look at FY2011, when you look at tuition, was that 7.1 million? And then you go to FY2018 and tuition's now down to 5.2 million. So that's a $2 million change in time of just tuition that we're bringing in. So, and then I just want to, again, emphasize that someone who loves our parks and the incredible offerings we have here in Fairfax County, the Board of Supervisors has made them self-funding for a whole variety of reasons. So if we're going to have ACE be self-funding, we have to do the analysis and understand what that expectation is and set them up for success.
Okay. Dr. Presidio.
Again, some great questions. And I hesitate to say too much because I know this is a committee report and not a staff report. But just a couple of things that I would note. Mr. Moon's point, I think, is really critical. And there's nobody sitting around the tables here in this room tonight that would disagree that we don't have the facilities that we would like to have for our adult ESOL learners. However, we've done the best that we can to make those conditions acceptable as a short-term solution to our overcrowding problem and our facilities needs that we have. And we certainly could talk more about our future plans. And I would want to have some folks from facilities to be part of it. But we have been planning for a new lease that would co-locate, as the committee has recommended, the ACE program and the adult high school program in the Herndon area in a new facility. Now, the one thing is, Mr. Moon has pointed out, though, and as we're having this discussion about the funding, that is a funding cost that the board, that we would advocate on staff and that I know that the committee would advocate, is that the school board cover the lease costs associated on behalf of ACE. So if ACE had to cover those lease costs and those facility costs, for example, on a new lease, that's pushing our overhead costs up and it's hurting our viability and our financial stability. So that's how all of these things work together. The other thing with respect to some of the questions that you were asking, Ms. McLaughlin, about the courses and the profitability of courses and the fluctuation, again, we have good analytics on that and we can, we can talk about what some of those trends have been and why, and why they are. We'd be happy to talk about that in more detail in a work session or offline with individual board members. But a lot of this has to do with the pricing costs of courses. Like, if you raise the cost too much, right, then you're going to price yourself out of the market to run a course that's actually generating a profit. So it's really hard. Like, we have a course pricing tool that takes into a variety of variables. We've hired an amazing financial analyst that used to work in the Financial Services Department, who's done some great work for us over in the past year plus around this. And we'd be happy to share much more detailed information about some of those business practices with the board.
Thank you, Dr. Presidio. Ms. Hines?
Thank you. Thank you all very much. As usual, it is hard for us to stay within the charge because there's so much to talk about. But thank you very much for this report. So I jotted down a couple of things that I think are school board work. And then I want to get back to your charge for next year to make sure that we have a chance to talk about that. I think one of the recommendations is that we update our policy. And I think that looks like something that, you know, we would have to send to governance. So I'm guessing that that's, if we want to accept that recommendation, that's what we'll have to do. All right? We'll have to send the policy update to governance, I think. Do we, did you have something to?
I know we don't generally do next steps, but if we were.
Okay. So I'm just saying. I think. Right. Yes, right. Whether we do that tonight or not. And I'll hang on to that if somebody else doesn't. Also, adding to the membership of ACE, I'm wondering if that also is something we need to send to governance.
Ms. Hines, if I can just clarify. What will happen with the recommendations here is they do go to staff and staff will come back to us with how, what they suggest. So we don't actually have to say it's a next step. We want staff to say, yeah, we support it and then it will go to governance.
Okay. So I guess maybe I'm asking staff then, Dr. Braybrand. When you come back to us, give us some advice on how to update the policy and whether or not we need to change our policy in order to add members. Because, I mean, I do think adding the new members is probably a good idea, just to infuse, you know, some other voices in there. As, yeah, well, I'm glad to hear that we have lease space possibly under consideration in the Herndon area. I was just trying to rack my brain about places up there and I just don't know of a spot, but there might be something I'm not thinking of. And then, so for the rest of my time, just to talk a little bit about your charge for next year. And I apologize. Is it in the documents you sent us or?
I don't believe it is. And I, and I apologize. I only recently sent it to Ms. Williams. The two components of the charge that were proposed for this year, one is continuation of what we've already done to continue to assess relocation and its effects. And secondly is, kind of in response to what we've heard, the actual text is, "Assess how ACE can be better positioned to serve the lifelong leaning needs of Fairfax County to include alignment with the strategic plans of both FCPS and Fairfax County." So I think this is, it was trying to go to some of the, some of the questions that we've heard about overlap with other programs and parks and rec and Nova and such like that to be able to make sure that we're offering things that make sense. And particularly as we enter the environment where we'll have higher, employers like Amazon coming in, looking for employees, what kind of skills do they need that we should be helping develop in our community.
Okay. And so do you think that adding the other members onto the committee would help with that particular part of the charge? I'm guessing it would.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. So that's part of the point. So to assess how ACE can be better positioned to meet the needs in the community, that's your general idea, right? And how it blends with other offerings in the community?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
Thank you. And thank you guys for being here. I've always appreciated ACE and the work that you do in the community. I actually, Dr. Braybrand, am wondering, in light of the extent to which we are serving adults through ACE, I'm, and the fact that we just passed One Fairfax about a year and a year, a little over a year ago, whether we have approached the county as dealing with this in a joint effort. We have, for, to the large extent borne the cost of this and certainly we have the expertise. But, but, you know, there is some truth to the fact that this is not our charge. But it doesn't make sense to leave it undone if we are truly committed to One Fairfax. And if we are helping to prepare families and we are equipping our citizens, then we are lifting the burden off of county services and a number of other things. And so I would like to suggest that some conversations take place with the county executive about how some of these costs might be shared with the county. Because I think that some of this may actually fall under their charge. I'm not accusing anyone, but, but I just, you know, if we're serious about One Fairfax and we did that together, then I really do think that this falls under, under that rubric. So I think that I just offer that as possibly being considered in the charge for our next year.
Thank you. I'm actually meeting with the county executive next week to look ahead to next year's budget. And that can be a conversation that I can begin around what we've heard tonight.
And I think that's particularly true in light of what we just said with the previous report we received. So I just, you know, I think we need to define.
I had already.
Oh, okay. Had I used all my three minutes?
You were down to the end. Go ahead and finish.
I'm just saying, it's a continuation of what we said previously.
Thank you. Ms. Dernakofax?
If you weren't three people down, I would say you copied off my paper. And, yeah, a lot of us were. Yes, yes. In, well, first of all, Brian, thank you so much for being here and thank you as well, Karen. I really appreciate, you know, your answer to the charge and then looking forward. My notes here, ACE actually is, you know, one of the components with One Fairfax. It is part of our system's desire to be, and part of our strategic plan, to be lifelong learners. So it plays into that role beautifully and it is exactly what we need to do. Ms. Keys-Gamarra, you said it well. It may not be exactly in our K through 12 bucket, but it isn't something to be dismantled. And so I too believe some kind of partnership with the county, you know, just because the parks offer their own things, there are classes, you know, there's space in the rec centers to, it doesn't mean just because they offer theirs, there's space in rec centers, there's space in office buildings. There, if you want business partners, how, you know, what would that be at night? Rather than have it in our facilities, there are spaces. And the One Fairfax, you know, it's, it's nice to be able to call upon that to say, let's stop siloing this. This is a community need and, and, and let's work together. You know, it is something that we offer as a system, but it is something we can partner with. And I think your thing, asking for additional ACE members who are business partners, they may have facilities that we could use. And again, like I said, there's, there's places that are vacant, county buildings that are vacant in the evenings when these, when a lot of these classes are offered and necessary. So let's look into that.
Thank you, Ms. Dernakofax. Ms. Pachek?
Well, thank you. Very happy to follow Ms. Keys-Gamarra, Ms. Dernakofax. We're all on the same wavelength here. I was actually starting to think about the way we have the joint working groups for early childhood education and, well, now task force for the environment, you know, one or the other, but working group perhaps. Because I do, I, and thank you, Brian and Lois, so much for your report. You know, Providence Community Center has a computer lab, you know? And so there, this is, and in my mind, it's, right, a joint adults career education, right? We really do, it is a joint effort. We have nonprofits like Literacy Council that are doing some of this work. And I think from making sure we find space where it's available, to be able to find the partnerships, instructors, funding, you know, I do, I hope, you know, you discuss that and I hope we maybe talk more about ways to be able to look at a task force or a working group jointly with the county. And then I did have quick questions for you. I'm sorry if I missed it in the report. I know you spoke specifically as to why some of the enrollment drops had happened. But it looks like, you know, they've been happening across the board over the years and especially areas, you know, I was surprised around the driver education and some of the other programs that have been, you know, very popular, even more languages. So I don't know if you all were able to delve into that or if that's more. So I don't know if you all were able to delve into that, or if that's more, you know, of a staff question.
It might be more of a staff question. I would note that the 19 numbers are not end-of-year numbers, so they're not complete.
But even 18.
But, yeah, I mean, there are a couple of drops that we, and we were more focused on kind of the effect of relocation on enrollment versus kind of just general changes in enrollment, although there were a few things that we noted in the report itself. But I think staff would have to answer beyond that.
Thank you. Do you know if staff has something now, or if this is for later?
So, we do have, we've been looking at enrollment quite a bit over the last couple of years, and you certainly know that as well. And to Dr. Presidio's point, we've been very careful to make sure that we're running classes that are being offered, that are of high interest, but also keep us at a profitability level that's acceptable. So that has impacted our enrollment. This year in particular, the adult ESOL enrollment has seen a dip, particularly in the Herndon area. And to speak even back to 2013, I just want to make sure it's clear that I work very closely with the parks and recs to make sure that we don't have duplicative offerings, that we're kind of staying our lanes. We have a memorandum of understanding, we meet at least twice a year to talk about the different types of offerings. So not offering classes that they're offering and vice versa. We also do a lot of cross-marketing now that we didn't do before, so we are seeing some improvement there. But I don't really have a full answer to the enrollment. We look at it constantly and wonder why. We do have some heat maps that we're developing now to kind of see, have our locations correct, you know. So some of our locations, it used to really just pop, like at Marshall High School, for instance, suddenly we don't have the kind of enrollments there anymore. So we're trying to see where our customers are coming from.
Yeah, and specifically driver's ed, I was really surprised, so.
So we did have some driver's ed issues because some of our cars weren't in service. So some of the cuts that we've had in the past, we haven't kept up with our kind of refurbishing of the cars, so we had to take some of them out of service.
So it wasn't a drop in demand?
Not a drop in demand at all, yeah. We had about 10 of our instructors also retired over the last two years, which I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but those instructors draw the kids in. I mean, the minute they hear that Mr. Stone says not teaching anymore, they start to look around. The other thing we heard quite a bit from our parent community was just flexibility, making sure that we're offering enough courses when they can bring their kids, right? So we've made some changes, particularly at Foster High School. We offer a lot more classes there than we have in the past.
Thank you, Ms. Paochek. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that much of what I was going to ask about has already been discussed. In particular, I had the same questions about the enrollment numbers and the declines over the last several years. And, you know, of course, this is something I'm sure you're looking at all the time to try to figure out, you know, how do we boost those numbers back up? And just to tie it in with my comments in the last session, I think that, you know, maybe the re-envisioning of ACE is, you know, partly that we need to build in career readiness for our students, you know, focusing on our students, because, you know, they are our charge, right? The students that are in our system. So I know that we have an adult high school completion program, and I think maybe that should also be, and career readiness, so that we can talk about, you know, how do we help those kids after they've graduated get career ready so that they can find meaningful and quality employment.
I want to comment very quickly, so Beth and I made some real connections to the ACE program. So we have been working very closely with her to make sure that those 18 to 23-year-olds have a place to land safely with us if they have graduated with no plan. They can come to the ACE program, and that we're also offering classes in a style from which they would like to have, like boot camps, things like that, that we've offered this year that we have never offered in the past in kind of a pilot way. So our A-plus certification, for instance, we offered, instead of drawing it out over 15 weeks or however long it took before, we have some boot camp kind of approach. So we have two full weekends and two nights, you know, in order to finish, and then take that certification and be able to graduate. So our younger population is very interested in these boot camp type of programs. So we brought a new program specialist in. He's got a lot of really innovative ideas that kind of break the mold, because we have been meeting, you know, usually the classes were meeting every Tuesday for the next however long, and that was not appealing to our young people at all. So we've changed that. We also piloted a program, accelerated workforce readiness, so in working with our career center specialists to kind of get some of those kids that were on the bubble, not sure what they wanted to do, get them into our EMT program, our CNA program, and things like that. So we have a very small number of kids, about 12 so far, who've taken advantage of this, but we're watching them closely, making sure that we're meeting their needs.
Thank you.
So I have one go back, but before I have Ms. McLaughlin going back, I did want to, and Ms. Schultz, talk about doing an asset inventory. And we talked about this a year ago when we spoke to you all last, about the importance of kind of saying, okay, where's the demand? And based on that demand, who's satisfying the demand? And so you briefly talked about it from the standpoint of reducing duplicative efforts with the parks. But we also need to look at where there might be duplicative effort, not only with parks, but with our libraries, with our, what we call over in my area, ventures in community, so our nonprofits, as well as what Northern Virginia Community College is offering. And then determine, based on that, I think the more that we can have this collaborative approach, which is why I'm glad to see that you want to expand your advisory committee to include more of these folks in your advisory committee, because that should help you going forward. But I think it's worth having that, you know, here's the demand, here's what's being offered, and where is the duplication in offering? And maybe the duplication, it might look like there's duplication in offering, but it's not because of where it's being offered regionally. So if you can only get it at the Woodbridge campus of Nova, it really doesn't do people in Herndon any good at all. Or if it's only offered in one location or the other. So I would look at that. The other thing is, when we're looking at our assets, as Ms. Darnakofax and others have suggested, look at them from a One Fairfax perspective, because we have space at our libraries, we have space in our rec centers. More and more, our community centers have space. And so we should be looking at those opportunities, because although you suggest you want a consolidation of the adult high school and the ACE in Herndon, you might want to find out whether that actually helps you, because if you consolidate everything, then you are also increasing transportation challenges for many of the people who need these courses the most. And so it might be a distributed model is the better one. And then the last piece is, have you looked at providing online solutions for some of this as well? Because that's going to be an area. I mean, and I fully support what you guys are doing. I had a grandmother who taught literacy, and I believe in the importance of the work you're doing. I just think that if we can, in your next year, really do that asset assessment so that we can actually have those important conversations. And so with that, I'm going to allow Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
So I'm to understand that driver's ed pays for itself, or does not?
So driver's ed does pay for itself, and we also accept for, some of the, depends on the maintenance costs for each year, so I do have that over the course of the last five years. We do have a few maintenance costs this year that we weren't expecting. The other thing is, we do offer a lower price, and we do get state aid for driver's education. So we do get some supplement.
The reason I say that, if you take on page, because this goes to the question of facilities. If you go to page 15 of the report, it talks about the number of enrollees. What I don't know is how many of these are duplicate enrollees, like how many, if somebody is, I don't know, if they're in adult enrichment, are they also taking another class? So I don't know if this is 9,428 discrete individuals, but just on our subsidy, which doesn't count all the other subsidies, but we're at 840, basically 845,000, we're paying basically, I think, like $89 per person to take a class. So in order to find facilities, we're right back to, of the 9,428 who take a class, where are they taking a class? Which classes are profitable? And where is the gap between? Because if the foreign film, you know, gala, you know, course is the one that's making money, offer five more of those. That's the entire point. If you want to, I mean, I'm stunned to look at the fact that something that we theoretically offer on behalf of school-aged children, which are the summer camps, 177 kids in a community of 1.1, 1.2 million, only 177 kids took part in ACE summer camps. There's a disconnect there. Either parents don't know about it, they're too expensive, they're not offered where we want them to be offered, but there's a mismatch. The gears are not working in that, you know, fewer than 10,000 people in the county of 1.2 million are taking ACE classes. And we're having to, you know, on a subsidy level, the state subsidy is over a million, the federal aid is 2 million, and then we make some from tuition, and then we're still having to put in over 3/4 of a million from FCPS. There's something that isn't working here. And it may be uncomfortable to say it, but somebody has to. Somebody has to say that fewer than 10,000 people are taking these classes, and we're funding it to the tune of millions of dollars, of taxpayer dollars, and the enrollment's going down. So there has to be a serious rethink about what is it that is the point of ACE? And if it is to offer enrichment courses in order to get the money so that we can do ESOL classes, okay. Then figure out what that balance is and deliver that balance. But don't advertise that we're offering 1,000 classes and then say, well, we're having to offer them in trailers, and then people are upset that they're going to adult classes in trailers, when kids are being educated 180 days of the year in almost 1,000 trailers. There's just such a disconnect here that is frustrating to me when I look at, there are nine magisterial supervisor offices that all have a community room. Put a class in their buildings and their community room, you know, every morning of the week, you know, weekends included, and then if we still don't have space and we're still not making money, then, you know, we have to just retool the whole thing. But there's space out there that's free, that the supervisors own.
I think we've all agreed with that. So Ms. Schultz, thank you. Do you want to go back?
No.
Okay.
May I just point out, the bottom of Exhibit 2, you need to look at, not necessarily the total served, because that includes the summer registrations, but the line above that, as of April, that was 16,538 for all of ACE. We're talking about ACE fund areas. And in previous years, that's been a little more than 20,000 people. So not fewer than 10,000, just as a correction.
Where do you get the 20,000? I'm sorry, where's the 20,000?
At the, in the third to bottom line on Exhibit 2, total adult and community education. Right now, that's 16,500, but that doesn't include enrollment through the end of the year.
But that also includes.
So Ms. Schultz, I'll be happy to give you a go back.
Well, this is, these are answering basic questions on the math here. Does the 16,000, though, include the driver's ed? What I was trying to do is get, pull out the ones that are self-funding. And if driver's ed was self-funding, I'm trying to pull out, and I think ESOL is self-funding too. ESOL pays for itself.
I mean, the transfer that the school board gave to ACE for years was only $235,000 to match the grant. It was required funds to match the grant.
No, no, I have no problem with that. I have no problem with that. I'm talking about which classes are profitable. And so if you take those out, what's left?
Right. I don't think we can answer that question now, and like I said, I would love your support to have people on the advisory committee to help us dig into some of these questions.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. I wanted to go back just because I was looking at page 15 with the enrollments. And interestingly, while the report talks about what was the impact when we relocated and pulled out of Woodson and brought it to other parts of the county, and yet it's actually the year before everything got moved out of Woodson that there was a major drop-off of 4,000 students of some kind not taking advantage of ACE programs anymore. And in fact, at the height, as you pointed out, and at the fiscal year 16, there was 23,000 people enrolled, and now we're at 16,500. But when you look at where there's maybe been a drop-off for adult ESOL, in the span of those four fiscal years, where total drop-off went from 23 to 16, which is about the 7,000 fewer people registering, taking advantage of it, from ESOL, that same time period, it's 1,700. So to my colleagues, what I would just mention again is, you look at total community up above, that was a drop-off of 4,000. So I think, again, this goes to where, this isn't about where we're offering ESOL and who's, I mean, there's a piece of it. There can be no denying the excellent reporting you've given to us about the conditions over there in Herndon. But we have a much bigger issue facing the ACE program in total, which is, your largest population has dropped notably in just the last four fiscal years. And so when we talked about whether you want to have more people join the advisory committee, I would politely suggest an alternative, which is, our advisory committee is extremely valuable, but they can meet once a month, and they have skill sets in all various ways. This is the Financial Services Department of FCPS, the third-largest employer in Virginia, and a $3 billion operation, they need to do the financial analysis and figure out what's going on here. And so, Dr. Braybrandt, that would be, you know, my request with hopefully support from this board, that no, I don't want my advisory committee that's volunteers to do this financial analysis of what's happening and why is it, you know, struggling to pay? Because I do think it just goes again to, these numbers show this isn't about ESOL, it's the overall aspect of ACE. And I'm sorry, when we're looking at still overcrowded classrooms, overworked teachers in K-12, we can't be transferring half a million dollars, a million dollars to ACE each year. It's just, it's not fiscally responsible for us to at least not understand what's contributing to this deficit running, because for many years, that just wasn't the case. But again, I hope my remarks are taken as, the advisory committee, the staff, I know you're all doing great work. We need to provide you the supports through financial services to sort out the financial component here. And just lastly, to Dr. Presidio, yes, we do need to figure out the space and the lease costs, and that would also, to my colleague's point, and someone who's been serving on skip all this time, I will gladly go to the board supervisors and say, this is the One Fairfax investment that you've got to help us with.
Okay, I don't see anybody else. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Moon, and you'll have last word.
Okay, thank you. Numbers that I see on the far right-hand side of the column in page 15, so enrollment data, that's as of April 30, 2019.
That's correct.
So that's a partial data, so you need to add another six or seven weeks on top of that. So the number's going to grow beyond that. So we don't know what that will be. Hopefully, we'll get that by September from staff. Hopefully we'll get that maybe by September from staff. My understanding has always been enrichment, adult enrichment courses pay for by itself. Because if we do not have a sufficient amount of, sufficient number of students signed up, we don't offer classes. We may be offering, but we don't actually deliver classes. And on, still on Exhibit Number 2, on top portion, when it says adult and community education section, we have items such as global language opportunity benefiting all learners. That's a global program. That's for our elementary school students. And we have a secondary school enrichment. I assume that's our secondary school students. It's not all adults. And as far as amount of funding is concerned, you know, back in 2009, is transfer, transfer was about $1.7 million. So right now, even you add another $750,000, it's less than a million dollars. So there is a stark difference, how much we used to put in and how much we are putting in right now. And also meanwhile, state aid and federal grant has been, has been increasing from, from, if you, if you look at the numbers, yeah, if you look at the numbers from, you know, 2009, if you put both state aid and federal aid put together, it was about $1.6 million. For 2018, it is, it exceeds, it exceeds altogether $3 million. So that's how we've been able to meet the financial, financial needs for this program. And I would love to have a more detailed analysis by staff sometime, but I just wanted to bring those to, you know, my board members' attention.
Last word, Ms. Hines.
I promise. I'm sorry. I just wanted to maybe wrap it up by just saying, we do appreciate this program. We value it. I feel like in the last several years, we've already gone through the exercise of making sure that it is offering things to the community that are not offered by anybody else. And they're important. And if we value it, I agree with Ms. McLaughlin. I think we have to, you know, ask staff, everything else has a budget, right? So let's set a budget for this. Let's not expect it to pay for itself every year because it doesn't, totally, because it doesn't seem like it does. And we accept that in our budgeting and, and leave room for it. So, you know, I feel like every time the committee comes here, there's a little bit of fighting for your life. And I, I don't think that's fair. I, I think we all understand. You know, we, when I first got on the board, we did all kinds of, let's make this leaner. Let's make sure it's not doing anything anybody else, you know, anybody else is already doing. And, you know, we need to continue to work on that, make sure we are lean and mean and doing everything well. But we do value it and we don't want to send any other kind of message to the community. So I, I think that we should send that message to staff pretty clearly.
Thank you, Ms. Hines, for ending with those words, because that is precisely how I feel. And I know that many of us around the table feel the same way. I also want to make a statement.
Sorry. I just wanted to, I forgot to recognize the only other member of the advisory committee who was here with us today, Dolly Whelan.
And Dolly is my representative and she lives close to Herndon.
And I want to personally thank Lois for being here and always being such a stalwart supporter of ACE, because you have been doing this for the greater part of two decades and have always been very generous in your time and your expertise and your incredible library of the history of ACE and other things that have happened here in the county in support of our adult learners. So thank you. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, this session is closed. Thank you. Is adjourned.